I call this meeting to order. I'd like to thank all board members, members of the city council, Mayor Klipsch, for coming this evening. And Corey, I didn't know if you were coming or not, thank you for coming as well. The purpose of tonight's meeting is for the board and city to work together to create a formal memorandum of understanding to better clarify our opportunities for creating a stronger partnership with one another, with the end result, of course, to better serve all members of our community. I'd like to thank Mr. Fred Smith for facilitating our meeting this evening. He's providing his services for free of charge. We have two board members tonight, Director Beck and Director Gosar participating by phone. So, in order for them to hear, we've set microphones out at the tables and we'd appreciate you using them, and we'll try to get them to participate as well. Mr. Smith has a portable phone. And I think that's about it. And of course, we have restrooms. We have women's restroom right across the hall, and around the corner, we have a men's restroom. And I think, oh, there's water in the cooler, wherever that is, right there. Okay, so help yourself. And now, Mayor Klipsch, meeting's yours.
Well, thank you, Ralph, and I'm also happy to be here, and thank all of our aldermen, as well as the school board members that are here. One is, has a medical issue she's working on today, the other, I think, is still planning on potentially coming. She had a potential conflict, Alderman-Dickman. I equally am interested in getting through this process. Again, we have, I think, one of the things we have found is that we have policies and procedures under which the city operates. We have school board policies, or there's school board policies that they operate under. We're committed to working together. How can we basically look at the procedures and situations by which we each govern our organizations and make sure that they can, we can find effective ways to adhere to those, but yet find ways for us to work together? There are differences, again, the process of, we have two distinct, and I think it's important to understand, there are two distinct organizations, separate boards, separate budgets, separate governance structures, but we are committed to the same things about making our community better. So, the exercise today is basically us coming together to do that. I want to thank those who have come today, but we're going to be in small groups, working on various issues. So, just so you're aware of the process, Mr. Smith, Fred will kind of walk us through what the details are going to be. So, again, feel free to sit in, but I think it's important that we get into our groups with both school board and city council representatives into smaller groups and discuss some of the processes. Fred is, has a private consulting and leadership firm. He also works at St. Ambrose University and has done a few things for the city, but also does facilitation around the country, and he has volunteered his time as a Davenport resident to help us facilitate this process. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Fred Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Good evening.
Good evening.
Who doesn't want to be here today? Isn't this going to be fun? Could be. Actually, I think this process works really well. First thing I want to do is make sure we all understand, why are we here? What do we hope to accomplish this evening, over the next couple hours? That is, to begin the steps to develop a memorandum of understanding between the city and the board. Okay? We, I like the idea of, we starting to talk about these things, some of the issues that have occurred in the past, let's get them out there, let's talk about them, and let's figure out the best way for these two organizations to work together. My job is simply to facilitate that discussion. Okay? The issues and the recommendations come from you all. I just help you get there. My job is a timekeeper. Okay? So, it's my job to make sure we keep moving. I'll let you go if we're on a certain topic for a while, if I think it's becoming non-productive or something that we need to pass on to, it's my job to keep it going. All right? Here's the process for this evening. I'm going to hand out these Post-It notes. Everybody will get a stack, and I want you to write down for me, what do you think the issues are that need to be addressed in this MOU? Okay? What do you worry about? What keeps you up at night? What are things that have occurred in the past that we want to avoid in the future? What are things that are going to happen in the future we need to start thinking about? This is your chance to carve out the content of this MOU. All right? So, one thought, one idea, one issue per note, and I hope you have 10 or 20 notes yourselves. This is a brain dump. All right? This is your opportunity to get your thoughts into the discussion. If you don't write anything down, we're not going to be able to discuss it. After about 10, 15 minutes of that, we're going to put all the Post-It notes up randomly, and there'll be a lot of topics. And then, we're going to take a few minutes and have some of you group those into categories. There might be communication issues, there might be authoritative issues, I don't know what they'll be. They'll speak for themselves. We'll group them into what I hope to be two or three categories, and then, as the mayor said, we're going to break into small groups with board people and city people on the same group, and we're going to discuss what those Post-It notes tell us. Okay? The idea in those small groups is to get a good issue statement. What are these Post-It notes all about? What's the 50,000-foot level? What is the main root of what these Post-It notes are telling us? And then, we're going to have a discussion about them and come up with some recommendations about things that need to be addressed in this MOU. Okay? We're not going to complete the MOU tonight, but we're going to identify the majority of its content. Okay? And I want to make sure that we all agree this is a non-attribution session. We have to be able to speak freely, okay? Because we are all here for the same reason, that's to make this relationship even stronger. The only way we can do that is to be able to speak freely, okay? And work through the issues. This is a productive thing to do. All right? Are there any questions? Yes?
Since you said we can speak freely.
Please do.
Who says we need an MOU?
The two gentlemen at the head...
I apologize.
Since we're speaking freely, who says we need an MOU?
We had a session with Mr. Johansson and the mayor, and a discussion about, a very good discussion about the state of the relationship between the city and the school board. And there are a few issues. And they both agreed not addressing these issues is a bad thing.
Absolutely.
Right. What we don't want is for the relationship to go south. So, if there's some issues with any relationship, the best thing to do is to get it on the table, talk about them, and figure out, all right, how do we best work together? The MOU is just the document that will describe those relationships. Any more questions?
Okay.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Yes, please.
There we go. Thank you, Mike. My question, just kind of above that, is, I understand the goal is to work together. I feel like we do, but I want to stress that we are two separate entities, two separate funding sources, within those two many different funding sources, I understand. So, I guess I'm not against, certainly, I mean, that's great if there's things that we can do more, but I guess, kind of, the next level of what Alderman-Mattson is asking, where do we, what are we not doing that could be better, I guess? I wasn't aware of, and maybe, it's just me, but I wasn't aware of concerns with communication or with that relationship. So, I guess I'm just looking, where is it that we're looking to go? Because, again, we don't have authority over the school, the school doesn't have authority over us, and I want that to be clear. We're two separate entities.
Thank you. That's exactly the issue. No one has authority over the other, but that doesn't mean that there isn't some common courtesies. For example, there have been times where the communication perhaps wasn't the best. There have been times where there's meetings with people that kind of upset somebody else. There's been some questions about, what is the responsibility as far as notifying somebody before something else happens? Those kind of things, right? It's, in what I've seen, these are not critical issues, but they could become critical issues. So, what we want to do is, we want to talk about the things that have occurred, and what would be appropriate in those circumstances. So, like I said, there's some communication issues, there's some approval issues, there's some notification issues. You know, I do a lot of these kind of things, and most of the time, it's communication issues. And I think that's what we have here. There's some understanding issues we need to clear up, and some communication issues. Okay? That's my personal opinion, but that's up to you. Yes, Mr. Ambrose?
We should be focused on communication, anything else is probably a waste of time.
Would you repeat that, please?
We should be focusing on communication, and that's fairly simple.
Yep. One more time.
Communication. It all sums up there. We wouldn't be in this situation if the council and the board had better communication. And we do have a certain level of communication, but, you know, when we hit these budgets, you know, we have some challenges. That's when we should probably be sitting down together and maybe brainstorming, not independently as a team, so...
That's exactly what I'm looking for in these groups, on the Post-It notes. But communication also...
I don't think we need Post-It notes to get that done.
Well, I want to give folks an opportunity... I'm sorry, go ahead.
We should be dialoguing now, or we'll get less...
Well, in my... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
In my experience, a group this large, it's really hard to open it up to a whole group. That's why I like the small groups, because small groups can discuss some things, make some notes, make some suggestions, and then, we're going to come back and report out to the body of the whole, where we have an opportunity for everybody here. And it's also a little more than just communication, there's some questions about, well, when do I have to notify this person when I'm doing this? Where's the line there? So, I think it's good to have the discussion before things go south. Yes?
Thank you. I'm fine with small groups, certainly, to help facilitate the conversations, but we do all, I would love to have, so every, all of us hear everybody's discussion, because I would love to hear what the other people say. I want to hear their thoughts, I want to hear their opinions, because I keep thinking communication's about hearing each other, and if we're sometimes in small groups. So, if you're taking it to small groups to develop that, and then, we all get to talk and speak about all the issues together, so we all, I'm fine with that. But if we're going to keep this as a small group and then not have a discussion so everybody can hear everybody's opinion, I'm not okay with that.
Thank you.
And, so, if that's your okay. And then, one other point, I think, also, I hope I'm misunderstanding, but if I would like to talk with someone else, I can talk with them. If we're going to where I have to ask someone to talk to them, that's a problem. So, I'll just throw that out.
Sure. Yes. So, thank you for bringing it up. When we go into the small groups, we're going to discuss the categories of Post-It notes. We'll make some suggestions, make some recommendations, and then, the idea is, we're going to take the output from each of the groups, we're going to type them into the computer, and everybody's going to see them up here. And then, when we, we're going to do exactly what you said, then, we're going to have each of the groups talk about what they came up with. Here was our discussion, here's the kind of things we talked about, here's some recommendations on things that we should address, and that is for the body of the whole. So, that's exactly what we planned towards the end of the session, and we'll leave plenty of time for that. Okay?
Does that answer your question, Mike?
I think. We'll see, I'm certainly open to how this goes, but communication is about actually community. So, if we're going to keep it where we're putting rules on our communication, then we're defeating what we're doing here. I mean, I think some of the issues are, that I've heard in the past, we're concerned about people actually talking to each other. Okay? So, if people have a problem talking to each other, that's a problem. I mean, if I want to talk to Julie, or Mr. Mayfield, or Mr. Dunn, I can talk to them. If I have to ask permission to do that, that's a huge concern. I fully understand open meeting rules. I've been on the council for 10 years. I would never want to consider any of us violating that, but if we're going to where we can't communicate to each other individually, we're all elected the same, and that's my thought. I don't know that that's, so I'm wanting to get this going.
I think the question where it came up here is that there are different cultures and different understandings about how people communicate, and I think we just need to surface that and have a discussion, and then, deal with that. If it is with your point, then I think that needs to be surfaced as an example, as all of us being elected officials, all of us ultimately have the same constituencies, so how do we work together to make sure we have an opportunity to talk and do that? So, that's one of the topics, I think, that people should write on their notes, as an example, and see how we deal with those kind of issues. And there's other, like I said, well, anyway, I don't want to get too much, but I think Kerry, Alderman-Thomkin, said very clearly, we're two separate organizations, so what does that mean? Or do we have mutual understanding and expectations of that, and what does that mean to each other, and how do we communicate about that?
And the MOU could very well state what you just said. There's nobody here, I gave the impression that we're looking for rules, we're just looking for understanding, clarification. Okay? Anything else? All right. If you run out of Post-It notes, let me know, I'll get you more. So, again, one thought per Post-It note, please, one issue, one point you want to make. This is your chance to get your concerns, issues, ideas. Let me get you some more.
So, you want one issue that we're concerned about?
Yes. Per Post-It note. So, you can have 10 Post-It notes with 10 issues. Whatever's in there.
One question.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted you to remember, we had two people on the phone.
Yeah.
However...
Yeah, we're going to put them in the room.
Yeah, but even on this part, you know, how do you incorporate them?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure your thinking's right.
Yeah. So, here's my thought. They can write their thoughts down, too.
Fred, the function you tell them.
Yeah. Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, for the folks that are on the call-in, if you could, please, just go ahead and make your notes as well, and then, we'll put you in one of the small groups, and you'll be able to contribute to that group.
Okay.
And we'll need to capture your comments, too, so we can incorporate them with all the other Post-It notes, so we'll have to...
Can you just give us some time to write?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, yeah. It should take 10, 15 minutes, so...
We do. I was doing some research, and it was not going to be as good as it was. Just curious. I'm just checking on it. I'm not even going to know. I don't know. I know. I know. I'm trying to imagine what's going on. I mean, we're good people. I know. You're trying to imagine what's going on. I'm sweating. I know the people listening. Are you coming to this season? No. You have a special image to hold for them. It'll be wonderful. What is it going to be? What's the deal? I need a sign. I know. I have no choice. No, I don't care about quality. I just care about quality. Last time, the one not even worked out so well for me, I'm like... It's a process. Come on. I appreciate quality.
We want good people. Yes.
Yeah. Really? Do you want to debate the last one? I almost got some gray hair out of that one. Gray hair. No, I just wrote these on my back.
Get that photo right now. Gave up. He's having a moment, but I didn't.
[inaudible]
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 Oh, sure.
Yeah.
[inaudible]
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 She's got a book.
You want it more?
I can't prepare.
Oh, I got mine.
Oh, there you go.
There you go.
I got the chance, can I?
Good.
[inaudible]
Well, it's probably nice to go easier for them, because you, um, you know, sometimes it can be kind of difficult for them, or when you start...
Word.
Yes.
[inaudible]
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 I wonder about...
Daddy's the fur. I think we're quite...
It's turned on, and it's on, so it's going to turn small. Sorry. Sorry for that. All right. There's nothing private, they're just stuck in the [inaudible]. Okay. [inaudible]
Let us get this done, next Thursday.
So, we're, the meeting's going to be at five on Tuesday, and we've got to keep...
Always have the best picture ever. And if you see the video from games, that is worth buying for us. I don't know if I know the names there, so you can see how my...
How it would be.
She was at the last meeting, she...
I can see it.
I knew it. Okay. I wondered, how's that going? So, out there?
Oh, still there.
But, that would be the one place that only the person would like.
Mm-hmm.
Here's how it should be.
This is what's going to be specified.
Mm-hmm.
It's very complicated, humiliating, you know, giving up the speech, and your family gets invited, you know, they're not coming.
Like, that's how it should be.
That'll be fun. And then, you hate, you know, hate your wife, because...
She was in her...
She gave us the video.
Sorry. She has to live with them, sure, sorry.
She's the reason he's moving. I'm pretty sure we'll call it a wash now.
There you go. There you go. Aw.
So, try to get your final schedule set.
Yeah. See?
Do you want to mark the piece? Do you want to sign it? I want a bigger picture.
Hmm.
[inaudible]
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 You bet. Um, I'm gonna straight up and start. Say that hundred fifty dollars. Anyway, so you'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out.
Yeah. And this will just get. Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, I'm assuming. Good for you. Good. So are you done with your year's degree?
Mm-hmm.
That's wonderful.
Pass.
There you go.
Woo-hoo.
When do you graduate?
Well, I graduated. It's sort of weird because it's done and you get graduated. So there's this formal kind of thing that.
Mm-hmm.
It's done. It's 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 being printed.
You're done with your masters?
I am done.
Oh, that's insane.
It's so bad.
Yes.
I remember those days where you're like, I don't even care about walking. I just want a piece of parchment.
And then you have all this extra free time that you don't know what to do with.
I know. Well, I'm trying to catch up like all the tax credit, you know, I had to let these tax credit people have to. I'm like a full rein of exercise. And then it's calling and saying, you know, you have to get this in, but I haven't been like, I gotta get this in because I have no time.
Well.
These two are the worst.
That's right.
I've learned about the consequences. So now I'm back in like.
Yeah, that's all you can do.
Back in a bag.
Oh, yeah.
Because it's, they're piling all that stuff.
I was bored. I can't remember after I graduated. I'm like, oh my gosh, no.
We've got home tour coming up. We got a new architectural line. We got like, um, you know, we got a new architectural guy. We got.
Yeah.
You know, we've got text part of my own projects on my house to get up to.
Yeah.
Of course, you know. He's saying the same stuff.
Yeah.
Because everybody else is.
Hmm. I have a. So I.
Well, I'm a cashier. I hit your chair and it passed.
You're not trying to.
Okay, I need, uh, volunteers. Three, three or four of you that are highly organized and very. To come up and, uh, take a look at these and see if they fall naturally into certain categories. And looking for. Couple of three categories.
I mean, two.
Council.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You got it.
Couple of council folks, couple of board folks would be.
I nominate.
All right. I will do it.
Come join me.
Me?
No. You can use this other.
Is it working? This.
They stick them up in.
Yeah, there we go. Okay, got it. Thanks. Yeah. Allison, can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. For those of you on the phone, uh, what the folks are doing is taking the post-it notes and breaking them into categories. So this will take probably about another ten minutes.
Okay, thank you.
So, do you want Rich and Jamie?
Here.
Okay. Of course. What's up? Hey, so.
Huh?
Can you forget, um, how we do say this? Is apparently kind of unique. So did you.
No, not ever.
Oh, nuts. Email doesn't work here. Hold on. I had to go the old-fashioned way. I use my email in here because I can't get to my email here. What? What? That's part of the. Well, it's part of the concerning, part of the reason why we're here. What? Well, exactly. So you just wanna report for how long? A year? Okay. Rick. Hey, John.
Hi.
How are you?
Good to see you.
Hi.
Outside.
No, no, no.
It's all right.
That's okay. That's all right.
Glad you joined this meeting.
Oh, I was.
Huh?
I was on the counter.
What would be the best thing you could come up with?
I don't know if it's possible.
What would, when you're. You could wave a magic wand.
I think one of the reasons why this meeting is getting held is that there were people who were about to tell. People wanted to talk to some school. I can't see tech. One of us.
So what would be, so if you could make wave a magic wand.
Well, well.
And just say, well, if a school or member can practice if you come to America and they want to provide anything. A citizen or a.
A citizen. I mean, well, no, we're not following the years. I have no.
So it'd be barely kind of. But. Why did they run? That's where, that's the key answer. Because it doesn't make any sense to them.
Thank you. All right. Good job.
Hey, one of those stickers fell off. Probably. Get some tape with your sticky.
All right. First of all, thanks to the four folks who helped categorize these. I think this is the hardest part of the process, getting them into categories. So thank you. Good job. Good job. Okay, now, I wanna break into small groups. Let me just reemphasize what we're looking for. This isn't a strategic planning session. Um, this isn't a problem solving. This is a, a session to take a look at the comments as they apply to how can the board and the city work closely together in harmony? So if there's. The idea is not necessarily to have to use every post-it note. We're looking for the main ideas, the main th- trends, the main themes. Okay? This one, the major category here is communication. This is collaboration. Now, there might be some overlap, but that's okay. So communication group, a collaboration group, and this one is kind of a futuristic vision kind of group. So what we need to do is divide into three small groups. I wanna mix between the board and the city. So, uh, board people, we've got two on the phone, right? Three, four. Okay. So I think the easiest thing to do would be to have the two folks on the phone in the same gr-
Fred, we got, we got Linda and me too.
Oh, well, what?
One, two, three, four, five, six.
Six.
Seven.
My.
We got eight.
Eight.
Seven.
So.
We got pride too. We got seven.
I think I saw that show. Um, I have a s- I have a suggestion to the two of you. Um, would you be interested in just kind of rotating around instead of sitting in one group? Because I think it might be good if you would just kind of rotate around. So that makes six?
That makes six. Right, we have six.
Okay. So I think the two folks on the phone, and we're gonna do that, you said back there? Okay. So I need, uh, let's see, how many do we have here?
We got seven, uh, city council people, I think, if I counted right. Yes, I did.
I'm messing.
Huh?
I'm messing.
This is not the time to mess.
Uh, let's see, so. Two, four, so we've got three groups.
Fourteen, three into fourteen goes four times.
There'll be four groups of two of each, and one has three.
We only need three groups.
Three, three into fourteen, or there's seven and seven, three into fourteen goes four times. Three into twenty goes eight. Four point eight people.
All right, let's do, let's do it this way. Let's take. Let's, go ahead. Let's take, uh, two city council folks and go in that back room with, uh, folks on the phone. And, uh, first group gets to pick. Any particular one you guys would like to work on?
What group would you guys pick?
Uh, food fish.
Okay. If you would take, put these on a separate piece of paper and then you'll have them with you.
Drop that bottom.
Okay. And then we have, uh. Let's see. Does it matter who, who, uh?
No, no.
Okay. Um, let's just do. Part, one, two, three.
Four right here.
There you go. Is that okay?
Yeah.
Which one do you want? Collaboration or futuristic? Collaborate, four of you are a group?
Us more together?
Yeah.
I don't care. Take that. Collaborate.
Okay, great. And that leaves one, two, three, four, five. And you do future. Is that okay?
Yeah.
All right. So, you can grab that. Now, what I'm looking for again is in, within those categories, what are the issues that we need to look at as far as what would go in a memorandum of understanding? So, we got about a half an hour to do this, and then a half an hour to report out.
So, and we're, where are we reporting at again?
Hey, Ray. How are you?
What's up?
Well, thank you. Are you in our room, Ray?
What?
Okay. Are the two folks on the phone?
They are hooked up. Mary's hooking us up.
Okay.
I don't know, I guess this is his speaker, right?
It's a speaker for the computer.
Well, um, how are we supposed to?
Mary's making a connection.
Yeah, I think this is just, uh, computer speakers. There we go. Oh, yeah, because they're not going to see.
So, where am I going to type? Am I typing?
Well, don't worry about it for now.
Oh, okay.
Let's just come up with.
Yeah, we want a clarification.
Yeah.
Condensing it into like a singular sticker?
Yeah, look, so, let me come over. Let me do this and I'll come right over, okay? Okay, let me go do that and then I'll come back. Here I am. So, we.
So, what do we see as the vision?
Yeah, we want to see a summary, kind of a summary issue statement.
Okay.
All right? And it can be something as simple as, you know, one of the things that needs to be addressed is the, the board and the city need to work together closely on, on future upcoming critical issues. Right? That's just kind of a issue statement.
So, we're kind of making a statement, not necessarily identifying tasks or anything like that.
Um, the statement, the kind of this, a general discrepan, statement. And then talk through these. And what would be great is if you identified a few areas that need to be addressed in this MOU. Well, according to this, we better address this, 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 and this. Okay? So, that's actually going to kind of be crafting the content of the MOU.
We're lucky we have Carrie here because she's highly organized.
Is that clear?
Your experience.
Are we good?
Yes.
Okay. Holler if you need something.
And, and in ways that we can, um, provide benefit to the whole community. Uh, we do believe that the school and that the city are really linked and that we should do a really good job working together. And that, that's all I would say.
Yeah, and I would think just to piggyback on that, as some questions came out earlier. If one alderman wants to talk to a school board member, is that okay? How do they inform that? Who keeps people in? One, what if two want to meet for each group? What about three? And how do they do that? What's the role of the council versus the school board members in policy generation versus approval? You know, all those kind of questions that come up. And if one is working under one premise and another's working on another, it's sometimes be confused. So, we're just going to, as a group, come up with, ah, that's how we're going to do it now. We understand, school board, school board does it one way and we might do it a little bit differently. So, under those parameters, how can we communicate most efficiently without ruining the other or messing up with the other person's operating procedures? So, just so you know, that anything we actually do, whatever, city operations, city ordinance, policy, the school board, that'll be done with everybody. Okay? Okay, we just want to let you know, but thank you for being.
We're busy right now. Yeah, trying to put notes together that are similar. And Fred is here, and Fred explained to us what it is that we're doing in this small group.
Okay. Uh, each of the three small groups have these series of post-it notes. Yours is communication. The first thing we need is kind of overall description of this issue. Okay? And that may be something as simple as, uh, we need to connect, to look to ways to improve communication. Whatever these kind of lead you to say. But one overarching statement, very general. Then, based upon these notes and your discussion, do I have this, am I on? Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Um, based upon your, these notes and your discussion, what are some areas of communication that need to be addressed in this MOU? We're not looking for, give me the content of the MOU, but just what are the areas that need to be addressed? And that information should come from these post-it notes and your discussion with the four of you. I don't know if you could take a picture of these or?
I can.
And send them to those guys?
Yeah.
You have email, right, on the phone?
Yeah.
I'm trying to figure out how to get you, uh?
Okay, I'm trying to put them in, I was trying to kind of put them.
In subcategories.
Some of them in order, um.
Subcategories?
Yeah, sort of subcategories.
See, that's, that's a really good way to go about it because those subcategories could be your area to address.
Right, right. And, and, and they're just falling now. This is all about how we talk to each other and some are saying, why can't we talk to each other? And why do we, you know, the rules of talking to each other. So, that's the first one.
Rules of communication.
Now, I'm going to need your emails. This is hard, though. I could spend all my time doing this.
We're going to do about a half an hour to work on this.
Okay. Now, this one's about sharing decision making. Okay.
So, what's your email address?
Yeah, you get the emails and I'm going to try to.
Uh, it's, um, Allison L.
As much as possible. Something to indicate, it's not going to be one of them.
Good. Five. Yeah, it's his last summer before school. No, he's not. So, he's a little bit of a boy genius, but he's just starting to think sports are cool. So, we're going to do soccer in the fall. So, right now, and all the neighborhood kids are really close, so it's just that little bit of enjoy being a little kid while you are, and when you can appreciate wanting to play sports, then we'll do it. So. Yeah. I bet. I bet. Yep. Yeah, I suspect he'll be more into baseball, just based on his natural abilities, which is a lovely summer sport.
Parents need to be aware of that.
Oh, yeah. The old time when I scored if I bucked. No, no more.
But it also could help us with these. It could. They what?
They went through fifty-eight.
Physical structure. Across the state during this.
If I'm reading that correctly, on the public website. Was that? It says on the website that they went through fifty-eight.
Did they say where this, where they were?
Oh, Iowa Department, there's fifty-eight rooms in districts which have been used in place. So, if there's not fifty-eight rooms, where are they going to start? We don't split the schools, is what I'm saying. Well, of course, you don't have fifty-eight schools, but in each school you have multiple rooms. So, yeah, you don't have to, obviously you don't have fifty-eight schools, but in each of these schools you have multiple rooms that there's different kids in. So, between all the buildings, between those buildings, whether it's elementary, I, it doesn't say what, if it's high school, elementary, uh, junior high, whatever, but between the schools and the district, there's fifty-eight rooms that were used for kids in.
And how many did they?
They.
They took some.
So, on the public website, if you, it's right there on the homepage. Yep, right on the homepage it says audit. And then if you scroll down to the bottom of that page, there's a link that says updated. There's a link, right, so they're shutting down. There's three rooms. So, they're searching for the verification on another one.
What's the.
That's on the website. It's a.
Yeah, they have three rooms that were reused because they did not.
But, you know, in isolation, it should be a conference room, you know, and an office chair. So, yeah, they put them all through. You're right, they put them all through. I was thinking it's like it was just specifically designated for this. Yeah. That was used to place. Yeah, because like if there's a building or whatever, if there's a fight, you have to separate all those. I, well, I was in here last night, but I have the plan is on, is lying though.
That letter that we wrote.
It's right here.
There's no funding for. There's the funding for two resource officers. So, where are they getting the cameras from? Are there cameras in schools?
Yeah. Yeah. Our building has a ton of. I don't know if elementary has them. Right, but all of the, all of the. So, it could be that everybody has them, but I don't.
So, do you know how they work, they work in one group? The police.
I, I don't know. Yeah, I mean, and we've used them to see like what's happening. Yeah, I don't know, yeah, I don't know.
On that, what are our rules of engagement?
Perfect.
For example, you know, we both have open meetings requirements, but we have different interpretations of what that means. So, what are our rules of engagement? Our first group.
And that's perfect because what, the way I see this MOU coming together is there's going to be three main sections, one for each of the groups.
Right.
There's going to be a general descriptor of, you know, improving communications or defining and improving communications, whatever you want the whole, the title to be. Under that, there'll be a section on rules of engagement. You're defining what the sections of those MOUs are going to be. And under rules of engagement, you would just say something like, you know, we need to define just a one sentence descriptor of what, what you, what you got here. Okay? And you just, if you do that for each of the groups, you got it nailed.
This one is about, um, planning and, um, understanding, you know, when changes are happening, how is that communicated, which is different than this. So, part of it, part of this next one, and I just sent this one, Allison, has to do with planning, um, regular and open communication, um, sharing city concerns jointly, um, notification, um, how do we let each other know what's coming up in the future? So, this to me is, feels more, uh, should be a meeting for, better for all, should be shared and discussed regularly, making the city better, should be shared and discussed regularly. So, this is more about planning together, communicating together, and finding a way to do that, I think, consistently. Does that, does that? Yeah. Okay. Okay. Now, the next one, there's some outliers.
And by the way, you don't have to include every post-it note because some of them are just outliers and.
Right. Well, I don't, I just couldn't put those in.
And.
Now, this one is the more, this is the.
Got yours?
Yeah, I'm in line, I'm standing in line to write.
Great. Super.
Oh, they came over. Yeah. They assured us they, um, they would include us at another time. Not, I don't know if it'll be in this type of facilitated, it'll be more like we go and, over two minutes. They won't do a focus group. I don't think, no, I think it would be helpful if they didn't, maybe, maybe you brush them. I think what they were talking about is if they come up with any kind of bring that back to us as being part of the city council. If we, if there was another table over there for the public, like constituents. That's why we're here.
Yeah.
Seeing democracy as a, so, the voters are left out.
Well, they're, you know, they're going to be crafting, each of these groups now are crafting sections. Subsections, so they're going to, they're basically. Then. So, that's where.
I think they'll add a big force, it seems like they're, they're putting a lot of trust in them.
I'm always working.
I can relate.
It's, uh, well, I think it's a generational thing of, we permanently live in a gray line. And so, like tomorrow afternoon, I'm going to pick Jagger up early from daycare, and he loves coming to City Hall. So, he's going to hang out at City Hall for a couple hours in the afternoon. And he loves it.
And he loves it, because he can go over to Chief Paul's office and get a gumball. So. So, once he hits about four, because you can't rationalize with a two-year-old. Once he gets like four, then they all realize that dad's side job comes with some kind of cool perks. Like, you can go have dinner at the firehouse. And then all of a sudden, it becomes, ooh, that's cool. So.
For free. That's big money right there. You're fired.
Well, I grew up on a farm, so I always got to ride in the tractor with my grandpa. Like, that was a good kick. So. Yeah. It all works out. It's like in January, when we go through budget, that's tough, because then half of Saturday is gone too. But the rest of the year kind of ebbs and flows. Oh, I was going to text Orton. Well, that's, I'm kind of an eight-thirty roller.
For that reason. Well, if I couldn't eat, but there's the whole, I gotta get you a steak here, and then I gotta get a salad, so. Right, but they, but they have to address. If you don't address. They all, but they all, there's already, there's already answers. With some of the biggest names, you need to know how to. Communicate with kids that are not like. Play, I went and saw one. And he's.
That, that doesn't happen.
There are people that are activists in teaching teachers and how to, um, how to, how to teach kids who look like that. They are working, yeah, it's not perfect. Certainly won't change their mind, but they are addressing.
And it's costing us money.
But, but what?
Both a cost.
So if you're having some kind of creative reform.
Instead, instead of money.
Why would the superintendent hire someone? But, you said. And that you're in special. If you're a student that don't like children, like how? Okay, I get that, but if you. You can choose the best candidate.
Huh?
So, yeah. So how do I know?
I'd like to see you guys work. Good stuff. So I asked Marion if she could wave a magic wand. Would she like? What would your magic wand wish for?
Copy and paste did bad. You know, when you copy one thing in, and your font size is another size, and then you look like a train wreck in writing. I did that.
Does your constituent understand what you can answer by that? Do they, they may not understand, but do they, do they want, do they want you to figure out?
So. So, I mean.
Do you ever go back?
I mean, the situation is a great start, but it needs to be a district-wide. It's not something that the district service. Right, it needs to be a whole. And that's not happening, training measures. I mean, that's great, and that shouldn't be happening.
So do you feel like you can pose a boy number?
But it's not just training, it's again, starting up here with a superintendent.
And then get back to your constituent, like, part of your constituent services. So your wish would be that you'll be able to answer those questions, or?
And so the, I mean, they're. But I, I think they're starting to, but it's not going to, you can't just look like this is happening, it doesn't work that way. So you start by training the teachers, you expect, put in this together, you do have to let the teachers address safety. With the climate of, of the country. But obviously with safety, but there were reasons why things were happening. Right, they're happening. We have kids who are being, because we have teachers that don't have to deal with, they don't know how to deal with either the disability, or they're intimidated by it because of the COVID or something. So, we don't, we, I can't, I completely understand that we need to, if we can save one again, we need to get to the bottom of it, and we need to have those outcomes real talks and about. But you don't say that. I think, I mean, it's safe, yes, sure, that's fine. Okay, but it's, okay, I think you're misunderstanding what the role of the security. I'm not. Because in our building, our security guard doesn't go around and intimidate. As long as the security guard is changing. It's up to the teachers, and the training that they need to have. It's great, I understand that they build relationships with the mentor or whatever. But if, if kids don't be dressed, well, that's the only reason that we're completely opposite of what. Where, I feel like it's.
Just individually.
I would say that. One of the good places is like planning the schools, the city of Davenport is grown by, by point nine percent. And the school enrollment is. So, as city council. What can we do to help you get more kids, families?
I think might have to start somewhere.
We're working, we're trying to attract people, so you're closing school.
Well, I can, I can understand that, but.
And there's no way you're going to be able to attract a whole lot more people if we don't have a vibrant school system.
I think you have to, you have to address.
That's, that's just like the.
It's not addressing, so I don't, but I understand addressing. A full research by, um, training and implementation, because we're sure you have training, training, we're trained across.
Yeah, it's like they're.
I guess we get them.
Federals.
And if you go to security guards, you go to a police department, you're not going to get a safety. From what you were held, from what you're going to teach them, that's, that's where you're going to go. Right, yeah, and this one was not, and so we asked.
Seven thirty-six, federal.
Thank you. Yeah, I just mean.
Um, no, it's a little ahead. Well, I also. And that's where. I can't, I can't, I can't, I can't, right, on my hands, I don't know my time, because teachers were not getting to work with their employees, or even those special, we didn't get pastors, we're not, they're, these were not, that caused Albert, that caused different things, so you need security guards to be known. When this kind of, it's all access to. Oh, I know, geez. It is that, maybe you know my.
Uh? I gotta get a.
What year?
It's okay, my daughter, there should have been a valedictorian.
What do you be up to, Cory?
Oh.
Working?
Yeah, trying to hire a parks director, so, working on that.
Do you get a lot of applications for that?
Yeah, I think I just closed it. Um, probably fifty-some, and we narrowed it to twenty and then eight.
Wow.
So, yeah.
And you have to mess with that?
Oh, yeah, no, I like that.
I would think there'd be like an HR person or something.
Ah, when it comes to department heads, I, I don't let those go. So, HR does the rest of it.
Hmm.
Nope.
So is that an important position?
I think so.
Okay.
So, we're going to miss Scott, we really are, but.
Scott who?
Scott Hope.
I don't know.
He's our parks director, he's going to Cedar Rapids.
Uh, bigger job, more money, or?
Yeah, and is closer to family for both women and his wife, so. But, all right. So.
Well, what do you think of this? We're going to do anything with this?
We'll see. I think we've got to get to the big part next.
Got what?
Got to get to the big part next.
What's the big part?
When everybody gets back together and talks about their rollups.
Half a hearing in a couple minutes.
So I think that's the big part.
It'd be interesting, see what they come up with.
Time will tell.
Yep. So are things pretty much status quo easy down there?
No day's ever easy, um, but, yeah.
Huh? Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Right, yeah.
So there you go.
Thanks, Tom. Thanks for that boat of confidence. You have been very good to me, until right now. True. That's what I tell Ski every day.
Absolutely, absolutely, you're not picked on, Al, you're not allowed to speak. But you've got.
Yeah, but I have a great team, so.
Well, and that makes it a lot better, uh, in getting that, you know, everybody, getting that team together.
And then Hope's got to go screwed up. It's a good group, though.
Allison Beck, can you hear me?
Yep.
Thank you.
That's an interesting idea. No, we've got a great.
It'll be interesting, see what we can do.
Okay, good job. All right, so, final, final home stretch here. Um, let me just emphasize, what you're going to hear is, uh, what's going to lead to the basic outline for this MOU. Okay, so each of the groups are going to report out on what they came up with, um, talk a little bit about it, and at that time, it's open to the group. So it's, it's open for discussion. So if you have any questions about, what do they mean by that, what about, give me some clarification, did you consider this, what about that? So when we walk out of here in a half an hour, we've got that basic outline that we've all agreed to, okay? And then the idea is that, um, we'll have a couple of board members and a couple of, uh, city members to fill it in, to start working together and writing the content for the outline, okay? It'll be a joint effort. All right, any questions? Okay, let's go with the futuristic topic. Just tell us a little bit about what you saw in those posted notes, how that led you to those, uh, categories.
Can this be made bigger? I can't even be able to read that dang thing. We could roll it down as we did it.
Yeah, we can make it bigger.
First thing here.
Here, just do this.
Thank you. Much better. Very good.
Uh, yeah, it's easy. More? Bigger?
Bigger.
Just scroll that line over a little bit more. This, yeah, just, no, this, that thing, yeah, over. There you go, maybe not that. Ah, there you go. Good, okay.
You get all the work. You should redelegate that.
Do I need to get up?
Sure.
Okay, so future, um, it's my favorite, so, so vision of what, probably like.
I'm, I'm sorry to interrupt, but can you use the microphone?
Oh, here, 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 here.
Thanks, can I just hold it?
Yeah.
All right, can you hear me? Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Um, so we have, the topic is future, or have, is, uh, yeah, is future. So the vision of how we would like to see us working together and how we would like to see us moving forward, so that's exciting to me. Um, so number one is the vision, uh, regular collaborative vision settings, sessions to produce measurable goals. So I'm assuming communication and collaboration is probably going to have a very similar item, um, in that we, we clearly saw a pattern of people wanting us to have regular meetings, maybe sit down and do some goal sessions, um, measurable goals, and I may have had that feature in the, down below. Uh, but we wanted to have something, um, concrete, so that would be that one. Um, number two, core city neighborhoods, so support and enhance neighborhoods. Um, just how, again, how can we do that together and identifying areas that may be of need? Um, number three, greatness, maintain the high level of achievement within the city and schools. Um, so there were a lot of positive things, which was, again, a good thing. Um, so how can we keep that and how can we improve upon that? Okay, wait a second. Um, number four, population, grow the city and increase the school population. Um, somebody was just telling me the city is growing, unfortunately, the school attendance is declining, so how can we, how can we work together to, to increase that? Um, kind of turn that around. Um, number five, civil rights, infrastructure. Um, I think this was more clarifying roles in various entities, so as the school continues to build different facilities, um, there's some questions on how, what the role is of civil rights and how that works. So if there's some way that we can assist with that, we'd be happy to do that, so, does that work? Any questions? Next?
You know, Fred, it, it may be better, because some of, I have maybe a question or two, but it might make more sense if we hear the other ones and see they may be addressed, because like number one, uh, that last one was joint sessions, uh, goal-setting sessions. I think we need to look at how we communicate and might have an impact on that as we go, so we'll see how that rolls out.
Okay. Okay. So, uh, if during a, uh, a group presentation of questions or clarifications, let's go ahead and ask them, but then at the end, we can open it up for a general discussion about all three. So next is collaboration?
Okay, so, um, we had, there was a, um, huge amount of notes and they had a lot of different things, but we tried to take them all to a, a basic statement about collaboration, then to sub, uh, implied things, and then an MOU thought. So, we came up with, we should know each other's visions, goals, and intent before actions and final products as much as possible. So, going to what Ms. Tompkins and her group discussed, um, we should talk before we really move forward on something major. Both the city should talk with the school folks, school folks should talk with city folks, before we do major things. Um, and we can talk about a lot with that and we can fill that in during the MOU, but we, some, there was a lot of sticky notes about that, talking with each other, discussing our issues, uh, and where we're intending to go, um, because we do, uh, as Davenport goes, the schools in Davenport and city work together, so we should be talking to each other, um, about major decisions before that, as much as we can. Um, so, there we go. Um, we all, it was pretty obvious, there's a need to meet inform, with each other, we need to communicate. We can do this all the time, um, but there is, there is a, there is a need, we believe, and the sticky notes back that up, uh, to talk with each other informally. Having said that, in the MOU, we, no decisions are made informa, duh. Um, if me and Ms. Tompkins talk about a, a street or something, we talk about the street. Nobody decides anything, so, um, there seems to be a concern that if we do that, this, well, no decisions can be made anyway, so I don't understand that thought, but... Um, and then our MOU, uh, two points, define commonalities, um, and more collaborative events to work together. Again, supporting the future group, um, how we can do those together. And any major building, student issue, and I'll say, and we didn't put it there, but any city issue, going back to our statement, discuss with each other before we move forward with it. Thank you.
To add on what Mike says, you know, we've been fortunate to have Alderman Mattson on the city council for the last ten years, and we've had incredible information and updates on what's going on with the Davenport school systems and, you know, I feel personally that, uh, thanks to Mike, we've been incredibly informed about all the great things that are going on with the Davenport schools and some of the challenges. You know, and that's because of Mike. But as far as the school board goes, you know, they don't have a representative like Mike on the school board to give them a constant update about what are some of the challenges, a lot of the issues with the city, so, you know, we're gonna address that in the future with improving our communications, and I wanna publicly thank Mike for, uh, all his great information he shares with us.
Yes.
I, I was curious about, um, Mike, you seem to emphasize, uh, the word informally, and you said, what does that mean? And then you made a comment and said, I don't understand that thought. That whole area seems to really rub you raw, is my impression. And I'm curious if you could, um, elaborate a little bit.
Um, I don't know what rub raw means, but there's, I believe, and I think others do, certainly, um, that if I wanna talk with someone, great, I think we should learn from each other and get to know each other much better than we do. And if I, there should be no issue with us talking with each other. There seems to be, and I could be totally wrong, and I'm only speaking for myself, but some of the other folks can speak for themselves, that people have a problem with that. That if I wanna talk with you, sir, well, you shouldn't, because they're two different entities. I don't understand that. That, I, I don't know if I'm answering your question or anything, but I'm always speaking for myself, I'm certainly not speaking for the group.
Did the whole group have, all those notes seem to bear those out? Julie, were you there? Okay, Julie too, and Clyde, you were in there too, Clyde? So I, I think we all have, I think what I'm hearing is, the whole group, both school board members and council members have concerns of that. I think, maybe I'll go back to number one now about the collaboration-related issues, we need to talk about that. I think at the crux of this, that I would suggest the group doing the MOU is that I think information is disseminated differently. Um, I get a sense of that in talking, and for instance, uh, as an example, um, maybe if I, in the last one, we wanna hear that, and maybe, that's why I was saying maybe we wait till the end, but, um, our aldermen are out communicating with the public all the time. They're having neighborhood meetings, they're getting feedback from homeowners, they're getting a variety of things. We're talking to business owners who wanna do developments. All of us are out doing that work. They don't have the authority to speak for the city, but they have the responsibility to get e, feedback and information for the city. So that, that may be a little different because typically, at our committee, the whole, there's some basic knowledge of already what's gonna go on. No decision has been made, because we only do that in public. We don't, we make our decisions in public, but I think there's a slight difference in the way we do business, and that creates some of the confusion here related to that, because our aldermen are gonna meet with a whole bunch of people all the time, and they're not meeting informally with three or four, five of them getting together as a group, but they're meeting with, two of them may go out and meet with a developer, or three may go out and meet with somebody who's interested in doing business just to learn more about what they're doing. And I think that's maybe a little different operational thing, and I think that's something we need to work out. Is to, how do we marry up these two operating systems, uh, to be able to work through that?
That's a great point, Mayor. Um, we're all together here on the betterment of, I assume, I believe, I fully believe everybody sitting here is, for the betterment of Davenport and all the citizens, etc., whether you're a student or a senior citizen. Um, as such, we should be talking to each other and understanding each other, um, and when we see things that are decided, either way, whether we do it and you guys don't understand, or know about it, or vice versa, um, we should be talking about that. And, um, I, I, I've learned a lot when I do do that, and I, and I think otherwise, well, I've heard from folks, oh, I didn't know that, if you were doing this, well, maybe we wouldn't, we'd do this, or vice versa. That, I, that's what we need to do better, I, I think. And, and the only way you can do that is, is to, to talk. Have coffee and talk, or meet informally. I mean, we could do this all the time, and I'm completely fine with it, but then we, we, we gotta, in the MOU, then we gotta under, we need to have frank conversations about that.
So I think that's, that would be my, I think that's one of the goals that I had hoped out of this, is because after talking with Ralph and, and Art and Cory and I were involved in this, we do business a little differently, and that can, causes some confusion. So I would hope with the MOU, we determine what that's gonna look like. How do we, what's, what is okay? Can Julie and Clyde meet with Mike and Rick and just have a discussion about, here's things that are happening in the city, these are things in the neighborhoods, these are things going on, this is, for that matter, how my family's doing, whatever you wanna talk about, no decisions are made, but then we have found that when the aldermen come back and say, I'm hearing some things of concern that people have, that's it. No decisions are made, we just have more information. So I think we need to take a look at, that's what I'm hoping the MOU can help us with.
One of, one of the things, I think, in this area, and I think we do have different cultures and different understandings of open meetings laws, clearly. And we've had frequent discussions with our lawyer, and they don't talk about decision-making. What they talk about is deliberation, which is quite different from decision-making. Clearly, there may not be decision-making if you only had three board members, but there can be deliberation. And that's, that's the thing that our lawyer has counseled us to be incredibly careful of even meeting in small groups like that. We can clearly have informal meetings, one-on-one, I think, anybody here, no question. But I think that when small groups of six people or seven people get together, that may be problematic as we're trying to be transparent and, uh, legal and, and ethical.
I'd agree with that totally.
Yeah, ironically, it's communication.
Right. Um, we had, um, the two folks on the phone, Dan had to, he dropped out, I think he was having phone difficulties, but Allison was there, Rich, Cool, and myself. Um, so our topic was communication, and as we sorted out the, the cards, uh, the first one, there was a lot, um, on, why can't we talk to each other? Um, you know, what is, what are the rules for talking to each other? Um, and there was a lot of, there were a lot of notes about that, and so that seemed to cluster into that the memorandum of understanding should clarify how individuals from both bodies can legally and ethically, um, talk with each other while upholding state open meeting laws. So that was a very clear one that came out of that. Um, the, the second grouping was larger, and it talked about communicating with each other, it talked about planning. It also asked, why are we hearing about things in the newspaper? Why are our, you know, our constituents, our residents are in upset and feel like they're shut out of the process and decisions are made, particularly about school closings and things like that? Um, and, um, but, but basically what it came down to was a need for better regular communication and planning. So we felt like the memorandum of understanding should define and develop a framework for regular and long-term planning, um, and communication between the two organizations, both planning and communication. Um, and it needed to be a very specific thing, and it needed to be, um, a regular one. I believe Allison, you were particularly stressing um, the regular communication. Um, so...
Yes.
Um, I would like to point out one thing in terms, in differences of how we operate. Um, decisions that are made by city council have, um, usually three readings, large, long, big decisions, they have three readings. Uh, the, there is a public to, can speak at each one. So we have a very open process for allowing the public to speak. And we have to operate, we operate very publicly in that way. Um, and so that may be, you know, as, as the mayor was saying, part of the process and the difference in the two groups is that, um, we, we are engaged with our residents, we are doing meetings, but we also have a process that at the end of the six weeks it takes for us to do this, uh, some of these things that folks might not like it, but they've had a chance to speak several times about it. So, at six different times if they wish, and, and, and being in a neighborhood that's an activist neighborhood, I have done that before, all six times for something that we wanted. So that is a big difference in how we operate, and it may be that as, um, board members, as, um, council members, we come to this group with an expectation of that kind of openness.
Thank you, Alderman Guinness, because in addition to those, we call them cycles, a cycle meeting, a committee, the whole, one week, council meeting the next, and that happens three times, our over-six-week period. But also in addition to that, the first and third, uh, Tuesdays of the month, we have another open work session to talk about what's coming up, issues, we look at the agenda, and, uh, public, that's a listening session for the public, but we're having those kind of, um, I'm not sure if it's deliberation or what you wanna call that, but it's non-voting, that's for sure. We can't, we're clearly, and our city attorney is there with us, we can't vote on anything. Uh, we can't say, well, Mike, what do you think about that, and then, Rick, what do you think, come up with, that's never done in that process, but people can voice concerns about, make sure we inform the neighbors, or make sure we do this, or let's make sure we do that before we make a decision. All of that is, is discussed in those sessions. So I think one of the challenges, and how do we deal with that with the operational procedure, um, that hopefully the MOU can address, is, I got a sense, and Ralph, you can clarify, or any other of the school board members, there's some time at the committee, the whole, you may be hearing it for the first time. Certain issues that may be coming up. In our case, that's not the case. Now, because we have six weeks of talking about it, and sometimes what we initially proposed in that first reading on the committee, the whole, changes over six weeks as we get more and more public information. So, th, that's a little different as well, and, uh, because as you said, when you, you found out about it in the newspaper, um, Alderman Guinness, some of us did on a couple of things. Some of the board members may have found out about it the night before at the committee, the whole meeting. So it's a little different process as we move forward, so we need to find ways to be able to coordinate that. I think that's the whole, my hope of this whole thing, because neither one of them are right or wrong, they're just different. And how do we work together to make sure we can do that, because it does impact, in our case, over a hundred thousand people, and all the children within the community almost, it's yours. So every family is impacted in some way by any decision we make. And that's why we wanna make sure that we're working together, and we can't do this alone, uh, as the two of us do this together, so... I don't know, Fred, do you have any other, uh, maybe other, anybody else may have some? Yeah. Anybody else who may have some comments?
Thanks, Mayor. You have done a great job on this, and Marion, just kinda follow-up. You know, six years ago, the city of Davenport was recognized as the most open and transparent city of a hundred thousand people. And we work incredibly hard to be open and transparent, and I'm very, very proud of the city, the city council, our, our, and our staff. So, Davenport's got eight wards, eight aldermen. Every ward's got kind of a different dynamic to it, and every alderman that is a ward alderman works incredibly hard every day to communicate with the people they represent, and you know, the school board's a little different, but I think this is the first step to improve our communication. It's not a rocket science to, uh, communicate better. And every day Cory works hard to, uh, make sure that Davenport stays the most open and transparent city, and so, we'll get this figured out, and, uh, you know, this is the first step. We got two great administrators, Doc Tate and Cory, so we'll get it worked out, and Frank, you know, you can't find a better communicator than our mayor.
I, I would just also, the thing that was exciting for me in this, uh, and this may or may not be true, but we had school board people and city council people talking more together than maybe we've had ever. You know, recently, where you're sitting in a group just talking about stuff. So I think that's a great improvement, a great takeaway from this, and I think how can we facilitate that happening more in the future? Uh, but still fall within the policies and the rules, and that's the challenge. Mike?
Yeah, I agree a hundred percent, Mayor. This is, this turned out to be, thank you, sir, wonderful to you, to folks scheduling. So the, I think the takeaway for whoever's doing the MOU or whatever, and we've had these meetings before, and each time we've agreed on things, but it might, we haven't really followed up as well. The, the big thing, in my opinion here, is follow-up now, that we actually schedule regular group meeting, how, whatever that's defined as, allowing individuals to talk, but also having regular conversations, whether it's a big group like this, which I, I think is good, but also other smaller groups, that we continue to push the communication in a, in a, in a scheduled event. That's, thank you.
Thank you, and Fred, I just wanna mention, you're probably, your thought, and I wanna make sure I partner with, with Ralph on this, is that, uh, the idea is, this group isn't gonna go off, and we'll, Ralph and I'll work together to come up with, again, two from each organization, but I think, um, then it comes back to this whole group and we talk about it as a group again. Because I don't think it's something we can lay on somebody, it has to be something that we all buy into, and if there's questions, we'll have time to discuss those as we move forward, after they come up with a draft, and we can look at it from a legal perspective and all the other details that we have, as we move that forward. And Julie, did you have something you want to say?
Even if it's something as simple as, this was on our agendas this month, these are things that we talked about, this was on our, granted, all of our stuff is transparent, it's all online, do I take the time to go look at the city council meetings? Honestly, I don't. And probably vice versa, I don't know how often you're going to our website to pull our stuff up, but I think if we sat in a group like this and said, these are the topics we talked about this month, or this quarter, or however often we meet, and these are the decisions that we made, at least then we would know what the other weather group is doing, thinking about, planning for, just something like that, some sort of common, very simple, just talking about the agendas and what, high level, what we discussed in meetings that month, or every other month, or whatever.
You know, the city of Davenport has an advantage because of Alderman Mattson being involved, and we do have two past school board members, so, you know, it's always, it's always at our doorstep.
The, the, the city council is saying that we talk a lot and, and we want to talk to you even more, but I just was noticing that you guys weren't talking very much, I wanted to encourage you to give us your feedback so that we don't realize that we left this conversation without, uh, asking you to say your piece.
Well, thank you for this opportunity.
I don't want to summarize, but I'm going to summarize, because all three of the points we're dealing with, I think we all understand at one, one level or another, that the city and the school district are inextricably intertwined, no matter what, whether it's our kids riding the city bus with their bus pass, whether it's the summer feeding program taking place in the parks, whether it's our horribly painful conversations about facilities and how many we have and how many we need, we are a significant employer in the community. You know, we, we rise and fall with the city, and conversely, you know, if the school district is seedy and crappy, people don't move to town. And I think the overriding issue, concern, worry, desire I have is that we work in a cooperative fashion to expand our population base, in particular, people with children. You know, we, we don't want to become Sun City.
Any other comments? So what I heard was, yes, thank you.
I just wanted to, again, I'm going to take Alderman Mattson's one level higher, so thank you, and Julie hit it as well. I've also participated in these meetings before, and we, and I feel, for myself, feel like we walked away, feel that it was a good conversation, but then it pretty much ended there. I have participated in some sessions that were a result, but again, it came to a stop and, and there was no follow-up, so disappointing, a little frustrating, but I think too, as Julie had said, you know, whether we, however we identify how often, but I think also to identify, what are those topics, identifying, define those, that, hey, that is something, you know, obviously you don't care about us, you know, some of, some of our things that we do, noise ordinances and those kinds of things, understand, but there are some things on both sides that, hey, this is something that we should be communicating. So I think to identify those in the MOU on both sides, and to make sure that we have those conversations, but I'd also like to, again, continue that goal-setting. I don't want to have a meeting, just have a meeting. I want to know why, what are we trying to do? What, so if we're going to sit down, what is it? And maybe it is just, hey, let's go over the past three months, what do we have, or what's coming up? That's certainly fine, but I do think that we're missing some opportunities on working together, and I think I'd like to see that improved, so I think we can do that, and I appreciate your time.
In my discussions with Ralph, I think we were both committed to this not being the end, it's the beginning. There's a lot of, this, this is a lot of unfinished business, I think we're both in agreement with that, because some of the questions of, how do we do planning in advance? Do our, do our systems work together to do that? Is there being creative and thinking outside the box? Is there some formal type of relationship that you can get into, that you can talk about things in advance? I don't know, but those are the kind of things I need, think we need to explore as, you know, I don't know what that all happens to be. So I think the key, and the last thing I want to say, and I always talk too much, but the last thing I want to say is that all the people that are all about education here, you only learn when there's some cognitive dissonance, you know, and I've been, I've been somewhat, we've had, because some of my, our aldermen were hesitant of doing this because they said, we don't want another kumbaya session. You know, you tell us all the good things you're doing, we tell us all the good things we're doing, and we all shake hands and then leave. I think we have to realize, it, there's some stuff that'll be tough decisions that we have to make about how we're going to do this, and we've got to understand that's going to happen. It's not a bad thing, you know, it's a good thing, and I think we found a lot of issues. Now the work begins with the, and we'll get back, Ralph and I'll try to help pick out people here, and if you're anybody interested in being on that group, there's some that I'll probably ask from our side, but on the same note, I think it's important to get that group together, let them look at it, knowing that we're going to see the whole thing when it's done, and then build from that point forward.
I'm reluctant to say much, because I don't like to talk, but I want to acknowledge a couple of things. One is that I know that there are two really, really big issues that have irritated the aldermen, and these are things that the board has made decisions, and you realized it the next day. And, and I too think that there's a way, these, these are things that, that because of confidentiality and all this stuff, there are challenges in trying to convey that information, even if we would have thought about it. But I, I have confidence that there's a way that we can figure it out. I don't know what it is, I'm, I have confidence in the, the group, whatever they are, that they can come up with that, and that all of us can do it as well. The only other thing I want to say is that I love Davenport, and I think all of us do. And I just wanted to say thank you again before you end up, but thank you to everybody for participating and coming together and, and offering your thoughts. That's all I have.
We'll turn it back to you. I would just say, again, thanks to Fred, again, masterful job again of getting this done, so let's give Fred a nice round of applause. And you are, you were definitely not, we should have paid you a lot more based on the salary, maybe 100%, 200% increase.
My metric on how well I do in these sessions is judged by if I finish on time, and I'm now two minutes late. So, so I want to publicly thank you two gentlemen, because your decision to have this session was very important, because any, any two organizations that work together that are worth their salt are going to have conflict, otherwise they're not doing anything. And conflict is good, if you don't have conflict, you're just not, you're just not moving forward. But acknowledging that conflict, and if it starts to become an issue, you address it, that's what you did. And I want to thank all of you for participating, it was an easy session for me, they're not always that easy. That's because of the quality of the people and your love of, of the city. So, and, but I agree with it, follow-up is key. I do a lot of strategic planning facilitation, and strategic plans fail because of lack of implementation, so the challenge back to you is, keep this going, have follow-up sessions, and I think I agree with you, you'll, you'll figure it out, there's no doubt. So, any final questions? Great, thank you.